Evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 3rd first board meeting of the new year. Please join me in place of speakers. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call of board members, all my fellow board members are present live tonight. For the good of the order, board discussion, does anyone have anything?
Glad we're open.
She said we're glad we're open.
Okay, good. Yes, thank you, Frank. Okay, opportunity for the public to be heard, we had no emails yet, so would anyone like to approach the podium for public comment? Okay. Then we'll move on to our presentation from Mosaic Architects.
Good evening, all. I'm John Jojo, I'm the principal with Mosaic Associates, and Michelle Lespritz is here with me, our project manager. We're going to go through our findings from the recent building condition survey that we have performed through the summer and into the early fall. Sorry, it's a little bit blurry.
Does that light work?
It does work.
Yeah, don't have a hard time hearing you, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Can you hear now?
No.
I did have it on.
It doesn't sound like it's on, but...
I have it on before.
I don't see the light.
Don't see the light.
It's not plugged in?
It's plugged in, then right there.
Take one of these.
Hold on, I got this working before.
One in doubt, turn on, turn off.
We should just kick it, right?
All right, let me start over. John Jojo with Mosaic Associates, I'm one of the principals in the firm. Michelle Lespritz is our project manager, she's been here for a number of years. We just recently finished the building condition survey. We started in late July, worked on it through the early fall. Tonight, we're going to share with you a little bit of findings of that report. Building condition surveys are required, state mandate, to do them every five years. This year was a little bit different because now it becomes a rolling five years for many districts across New York State. They used to do them all at one time, and in order to save some funds, they actually started to spread them out. So, last year was Boreyville's year to do them. In front of you, you've got a fairly large packet, that I will not go through all of that tonight. We're basically going to show you kind of where we are with the monies, the priorities, and the idea of what it is that we found. Your homework would be is to get together with yourselves or your facilities committee, come up with some questions if you have them, go through the superintendent, we'll be happy to come back and meet with you if need be to actually show that you are why we found what we did. But, within the packet are drawings, floor plans about where things are, and some photographs with a little bit of a blurb about what the finding is. So if you wanted to take a little tour yourself, you're able to do that and walk the buildings alone to kind of see what we actually saw during the last summer. So, I'll turn this over to Michelle, and if you've got questions, please stop us along the way.
So, this is the summary page that totals the yearly projected expenditures. And I know it's a big, it's very big as we could get screen. But, so the totals align with the next two pages, which break it down even more. So, I had, some of you may have seen these already, I'm not sure if he has seen these, but we went and prioritized them in some sort of logical way. I don't think you want me to go through each line item, but we have, you know, some repair issues in the first year, this is for the high school. There's water damage, there's some roof repairs, replacing some doors, resurfacing the tennis court and the track, aerating, top dressing the fields. We have a first year total of $2.5 million. The second year, we're having, creating some secure vestibules, doing some mechanical work, replacing some pool pumps and air handlers and water heaters, also upgrading door hardware to classroom intrusion locks, which I believe we're working with a consultant and Phil to have a full survey done of both buildings. So we have a door-by-door accounting of what you actually have. And that is year two with a total of 2.3. Then, in year three, we move out into some, you know, replacing some carpet with some hard surfaces, replacing some sagging ceilings, more mechanical and electrical work, and one of Frank's ideas was for outdoor teaching pavilion. You'll see that at both schools. So year three, we have a $4.1 million total. Year four is some more mechanical and electrical work, which is $661,000 total. Year five, I put some stuff in here that may not be, you know, super priority. In the high school, you have some window walls in the corridor, replacing some older doors, there was a request for an exterior storage building, some more mechanical work, doors in the middle school, and then replacing some more condensers, mechanical work. And, that year is total of $695,000, and the whole projection right now for the high school is $10.4 million. Anybody have a question about the high school?
When would this schedule begin?
So, the, I think it's important to note is, these aren't actually like needed year by year by year by year, but these are the things that we can get done, and we'd like to kind of get some of the priority stuff done in year one, but it doesn't mean it actually will happen. It doesn't mean that stuff in year three will happen, in year three it could happen in year two or year one. For example, already having the curtains fire treated, we're already doing that. So that's already been kind of done. So we started, and it's basically almost like a checklist, where are we? And we start clicking them off, clicking them off. So, we've already begun working on these items, and budgeting for these items in year one, year two, and year three, that's why some of the big ticket items are there, but there's really not a set schedule, because some of this stuff might be done in four years if we were lucky. Maybe if, you know, we do something like an energy performance contract, we can bring all of them out in year one, and then not have year two or three, because we are being fiscally, you know, responsible.
Is year one associated with a fiscal year?
The answer is, the reason why we break it out over a five-year plan is because the building condition survey is needed every five years.
Right.
So, in the perfect world where a district would have, you know, the money to do all that work, we basically say instead of doing a very large referendum at one time, in order to make sure your cash flow runs correctly, you know, you break that out over five years. Now, maybe, and like the superintendent mentioned, there might be that if you're going to do a project focusing on mechanical work only, that you cherry pick items from different, from all those years, and kind of do one large mechanical project, because, as you know, if you do a larger project, you're going, things will become a lot cheaper down there.
What I'm getting at is, this is presented to us with dollar amounts-
Yep.
-that suggest that's the amount you're going to spend in that year.
That, not necessarily. Basically, this is our reporting to the state education department, and one of their things is that, and it's more toward their usage, is when we tell them how the district is going to do their work, in their world, they want to be able to budget the state funds that way, it doesn't mean that it has to happen that way. So basically, when we take into a priority list for a district, this is one of the reasons why, as Mike had mentioned, we have a little bit of homework. You know, if the priority doesn't agree with the way the district wants to move forward, we can actually go ahead and adjust that on for you, and create another list of priorities. This was our first blush at taking a look at what those projects would be. I don't, did I answer your question?
And then paying for this?
Yep.
Is there a combination of local and state dollars?
Yes, there is, always.
But I think it's also important to note that on the previous five-year condition survey, not everything got done. So, and I know we looked at two five-years previously, and there were still things that were on those five-year plans that weren't accounted for. So just because they're on a five-year plan doesn't mean they have to get finished. There's very specific things that need to get done that, if something is like not working correctly, or if there's, you know, like a safety issue that needs to get addressed, but some things that are on a building condition survey may not get addressed due to other issues.
And SUD, I think this thing, oh, SUD likes to see, like, they'd like to see things on the list. You can't, right, come up with something that hasn't been on your building condition survey and say you need to replace it, or want a new one that hasn't been on one of your building condition surveys in the past, or for this one.
True. Sometimes, as I said, obviously, you know, if a hot water tank dies on you, and you have to get a new one down the road here, that doesn't mean that, that doesn't rise to the, you know, to the level. The idea is to let the state know exactly what the condition of your facility is like, so they understand that it's not, there's not a $60 million project that's coming down the road at them, it's going to be possibly spread out over a number of years, but only have a maximum value of, you know, I think it's less than $20 million plus what we saw to actually get your facility up to a, kind of like a level of repair.
Okay. It sounds like you're kind of crafting something you could think would pass muster with SED.
Well, you know, obviously, we, you know, that's, their mandated building condition survey is something that we obviously have to pay attention to, because that's why we're doing it. So we basically are, we do our cost estimates based upon what the projections are, and the cost estimates that we give you over the first couple of years are pretty good, pretty good numbers. Obviously, years three, four, and five get a little fuzzy here, because we don't know where prices are going. They can either go up, or they could actually go down if, you know, our economy rolls over. So, you know, they also understand, you know, the ability of trying to do cost estimating at the same time. So, you know, and they live the same way we do. You know, the first couple of years are pretty good, but I don't know if, we're not truly trying to craft a project, this is really to give you some insight about what the conditions of your facilities are, and if you decide as a board to take action to maybe mitigate some of those, you know, headaches that may be coming down the road at you.
That five-year thing that you're talking about, my bet would be that that would probably go past that five-year to get what we want.
I would say yes, yeah.
Yeah, because like Frank said, some of the things from 10 years ago are still on the list, just haven't been done.
Rachel?
Yeah, I've been curious about, about a year and a half, and we were talking about ventilation in each room, and I was just curious, some rooms were able to take the Murph 13s, but others were absolutely not.
That's correct. Yes, well, some of the units are still to the point where, you know, it's not something I can really recommend that you change up, because they're still in work, good working order. So to me, that's, that is, like, I look at it as a luxury, and I would certainly, you know, chat with the facilities committee about whether or not it's something we want to invest in, too. You know, because I'm not here, I can't come along and say, you know, I think, you know, going to a Murph 13 filter is the best thing for the district if there's other needs. So to me, you know, this is, this is basically what I see that need to be upgraded. If there is, like, to me, that's a, I don't want to minimize it, but to me, that's a wish list item, because, you know, if you have like a two-year-old car that's in good condition, I wouldn't recommend that you go and buy a new car just because, you know, you get better gas mileage, you know what I mean? So, you know, to me, it's a conversation on whether or not we want to invest into that kind of filtering for all of your rooms when the unit ventilator or the rooftop unit is still in good working condition. You know, can we look, possibly look at maybe making modifications to that? Certainly. But, you know, I didn't want to go, I'm not here to basically create a project, I'm here to report on what our findings are based upon the directive from the state education department.
So the absence of the ventilation, except in places where, you know, ventilation at the IT room is on the list, because that system is not-
Is married its useful life, or it's not functioning.
There's zero ventilation in that IT room.
Yes. That's correct.
But, in other places, the ventilation is still functioning, although it might not be doing the filtration-
That you may be-
...and the air changes per hour-
That you may want, yes. Well, it meets the state education requirements for ventilation. It may not meet the filterization that the district may be looking for.
Right.
Because typically, you get like, it's like an 11 right now in many, in many rooms.
Is it 11 at all?
Yes, it is.
So, John, sorry. Yeah. So, in putting together the plan, is the expectation that some of these items don't repeat through the five years, but may need to repeat at a later time?
And that's obviously the board's decision on how much we bite off to do, yes. You know, if we're renovating, like, say, a wing of a building, for whatever reason, you know, we'll start looking at items that might be in years four and five, and say, hey, do you want to do them at the same time right now? You know, because it might make sense, because if you want to do the whole wing at, you know, instead of doing some condensers, for whatever reason, it's maybe year, you know, five, you know, to me, it makes sense to do the whole thing at once, and then move to another wing of the building when it's, when it's, that time is appropriate, but...
Right, but for things like aerating the fields, and cleaning the kitchen drains, but you have listed here.
Yeah, well, those are the kind of things that keep, kind of keep your business going, so those are the kind of things that need, that need to be done right away.
More in the category of regular maintenance?
Well, you could look at that as regular maintenance. See, everything that I put on this list is not something that you actually have to go out and bid and have us do. This is more of a list that if you have, you want to do some things internally, you know, we can actually create a, another line item that says, you know, where I've worked with others, we say "by owner," and maybe they're going to have somebody else do that, and they want to hire directly to do that. You know, this is not, it just doesn't have to be done as a capital project, this could, we can certainly break this down and have it done, maybe within-house staff possibly, or maybe a direct let, if you wanted to do it that way.
I'm going to answer your question. Fields are a major issue of the use of the facilities committee, and something that we're focusing in on. So we put it on the building condition survey to say that it's an important issue that we want to address, and then after it's aerated and done, then a maintenance plan will be done, so we've done repeats each year, but this is like the catalyst to move us forward to show that it's a serious issue that we're addressing as a... You're welcome.
I have one more question.
Sure.
So, by putting this together, and putting this plan together, and the price itself, and submitting it to state end, we're basically saying, we've done a survey, as required, here are some things that we would like to improve upon, we estimated the cost for that, but we ourselves are not obligated towards SED. We don't have an obligation to do this stuff as per SED.
This is strictly still a local decision on what you do as a project, if anything.
And SED does not see this. They will see only money value on items that have to be repeatedly replaced, like your condition at your field at the elementary school, they will see a number value on that, but they're not necessarily, I mean, it's, the building condition survey is a little more vague, so all the doors are going to be in one category, it's not going to be as itemized as this.
One of the issues-
And what Michelle, sorry, what Michelle's saying is, for example, our elementary school fields are, I believe, satisfactory, correct? But, I mean, is that what you said?
That's right, yes, we did.
But it needs work, so those are something that, that elementary field, you know, we're trying to budget out to get a fix on that this year, which we have, but in order for that field to become in good standing, we need to do work on that. So that's why, that's one of them, that's a big ticket item that needs to be accomplished, because right now, it's below par, and we want it up to par, we want it where it used to be, like pristine.
And there's an obligation that we do that?
There will be, well, SED will see that, though.
They'll see it, but you're, they're not going to say to you, you can't do something else because you didn't do the fields, so you, so no, I don't think, I think no is the answer to your question. It's not going to hold you back from doing anything else, say, Frank decides the fields are okay, and he wants to do something else, just because it's on the VCS doesn't mean you have to do it.
I don't want to have our hands tied, where, you know, we would like to do this, now it's become a priority, but by SED purview, we must do this.
No.
And we won't have that kind of an obligation.
And let me try to clarify one more time, this is more of like an enhanced report for you, the district itself, the information that SED requires, it doesn't give you a lot of space to write down specifics. You get like 256 characters to kind of describe which is, could be a problem for maybe a district that has over a million square feet. So it's like, it's really hard to condense, because at some point, I have to make a judgment, say, on doors, on wood doors specifically. You know, if the door's not falling off the hinges, you know, if there's one door like that, is it appropriate to say every door is failing in the district? So sometimes you can't say anything, even though there might be two or three doors that are kind of like broken that really need to be repaired. So this is one of the reasons why we really appreciate to be able to build this for the district, because then you can actually get a different flavor about what it is that we're actually reporting to the education department.
I understand, thank you.
That was the high school. Elementary school, we have talked about providing a secure entry, again, some ceilings, there's one of your front stairs that really needs to be replaced, and again, some roof work, and some of that would fall under maintenance. The first year for the elementary school is 1.8. We have a lot more stuff in the second year here, some site work, sidewalks and stairs, abatement, we've talked with Frank about moving the main offices downstairs, expanding the cafeteria, expanding the kitchen facilities, and providing an off-site transportation facility. That's where a lot of the money comes from in the year two, and as well as providing cooling on the third floor of the elementary school, as well as some other mechanical issues. And year two is a 3.5 total right now. Year three, we're doing-
So, more questions with Frank, I mean, these totals here don't include the cost to rehab the bus garage-
Correct, right, because that's kind of where I was, because when I, I got to be honest with you, you guys sent this today, and I haven't had time to look at it, so Jim and I did a very quick look before. So, that's what I kind of was, year two, I mean, there's a lot of work that we need to do, and that 3.5 seems very minimal for doing the work that needs to be done on the transportation facility, we have that, moving it, redoing those rooms.
Well, the numbers for the rooms are-
You know, adding in a new entryway.
Yep, and that's in the top, year one is 400. So if you add 400, and then the three line items about moving the office, expanding the cafeteria, and providing kitchen facilities, that itself equals like almost $3.5 million. And then, the cost of the transportation facility, because we don't have a specific direction in which we're going right now, so that's why we put TBD in there.
Okay, and does that include the site work for the classrooms in the front, and also all the new classrooms in the buildings?
The 3.5 for those, like, four line items would be that, but the site work would go under the TBD column. You mean for that? For the exterior classroom, like, we had talked about, you mean, Frank, outside the-
Yeah. What, where's the classroom where the kitchen currently is now? Is that price tag?
So that would just be, I have provided expanded kitchen facilities, moved main offices, and nursed the first floor, and expand cafeteria, that would be encompassed in those three.
Because that, then the high school office needs to be reconfigured, and cafeteria-
Elementary school?
Yeah, and the elementary school, if you move in the high school office, those two rooms need to become classrooms we talked about.
Yeah.
And then the current cafeteria would need to become classrooms as well.
These, the dollar amounts were based on square footages?
Oh, okay, so now, it could be more than that.
I took the total square footage of areas that we had talked about, so those, that's to those numbers.
If the conversation changes, obviously, the number will change a little bit.
Okay.
What you're getting at, Frank, you were talking about taking the transportation facility that's there now, and putting classroom space in there?
Yes.
And that's not listed here?
It's not because of-
Sort of is, and sort of isn't.
It kind of is, because we don't have a specific yet of where we can go, I think John was going to talk about, I'll talk about it quick, is, we're working with DPW as a shared service contract, that's possibly being able to support the county and the school district in a shared service agreement, that would be much beneficial to our taxpayers, but we're not there yet, kind of full understanding of it, so these things can change, but I'm hoping that the plan works out, and that we can be able to make this all happen.
And that, you know, and that is not seen as something unsatisfactory, that, that was, like, looking for a future referendum, this is not a negative VCS item.
But the state would want to see that, it's on our VCS.
Yeah, they want to see that as on here, is what you're looking at doing. Where did I say, year three, is, you have some old cabinetry in the rear wing of the elementary school, as well as, I think, the art room is a different line item, replacing some temperature controls, changing out your old fixtures to LED. That year totals $922,000. Year four, we have some masonry restoration at the original building, which is, if you're looking at the building, it's the left-hand side, replacing some electric panels, and again, replacing carpet with a hard surface. That's $772,000. The year five is upgrading the art room that I mentioned before, toilets at the rear wing, they're really small and old, and again, Frank asked for a exterior pavilion there as well, and that is $651,000, for a total of 6.2 at the elementary school. And, we did add, so the reason if you add both the totals, they don't equal in the summary, is because we added escalation to each year, and that brings grand total right now to $18,895,065. For the first year, like John said, the first two years are a little closer, but when we got third, fourth, and fifth year, we add more escalation.
Is there going to be a need for a referendum or something?
Yes.
I do want-
If you want to do the transportation facility-
Yes, as we've talked about in the past, the elementary school with the transportation facility, that would be the referendum that we've been talking about, because that would be the one that I would say we would need to go after in the future.
Most of this other stuff therefore would be paid for?
Well, we're going to talk about that in a minute, because there's other options that we want to, I want to discuss.
That's pretty much all we were, we didn't want to overwhelm everybody with the entire packet, but that's yours.
I am going to talk about your question in five seconds, Tim, because it's on my report chart.
Just one question back to year two for the elementary school, should we, since this is going to say that, should we expand the description of what we want to do there? Because we really don't say anything about classrooms or cafeteria.
That, SED won't really see, they don't see this.
With all the money attached and everything, and there's, like John said, there's like checkbox form, checkboxes.
Yeah, there's very, there's very little space to actually type a story through them.
This is more for us to help guide our conversations, and to work us through, so what we have is sufficient for SED purposes. And then the plans that we already have to Mosaic with the facility project, and the plans that we're working through with transportation, those are plans that have to be over and moved forward.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
John, don't leave yet?
No, no, no.
Because I might need you for this next part, and my superintendent first.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the superintendent.
Okay, so Tim asks a great question, it's like, how do we actually find funding for all of these things to get done?
Thank you, Jeff, that's Tim, thank you.
And, and, you know, is it come out of the general fund, does it come out of grants, does it come out of different- out of grants, does it come out of different ideas, so some of these things can come out of grants that we can look for, some of them can come out of our general fund budget, but there's something called an energy performance contract, John would probably be able to explain this a lot better than I can, and there's a resolution tonight to discuss this. If you look at our five-year, there are a lot of things on there that are all electrical, so it's univentilators, it's, you know, air conditioning units, it's air vent units, it's air handlers, it's all things that deal with energy, and energy performance contracts and LED light conversion, what they do is basically, you go out to a company, the company says, I can do XYZ for you, and I can do all of these different things that are in it, and John can probably explain it better, but I'm trying to keep it as minimal as possible, and the district will not have to pay, it's a capital project, but the district will not have to pay their part of it, because that funding will come out of the cost savings that is made over an 18-year, right John?
Correct.
18-year process, so you can go out for an EPC, there's school districts that have done it, and you can get all these energy things done, so a large scale amount, we're not sure exactly how much yet, because it all depends on how much money with the conversion to LED, how much can be saved, and what we can put into that, and then with that cost savings, the energy performance contract is then paid for without any tax or going to our community, so we can do this, get this project done, and have it be zero wind test on our taxpayers, and get this stuff paid for, so that's why I'm saying like it's a little bit more complicated than coming out of the general fund, that's why I think an energy performance contract, looking into it, and approving for John and Mosaic to talk to a vendor, see how much they can do, and get an evaluation of it, might be a benefit of the district, that is a capital project, you do have, right John, I believe, let me sure I'm right in saying these things.
You were correct.
Yep, it's a capital project, but it can help us really nail up a whole bunch of these things within a year, instead of waiting five years, then when we go out for a referendum, we have less to put on our taxpayers, because we've already done this through the EPC, so not only we're forward-thinking a little bit, but it's also a lot of cost saving, that's why an energy performance contract, you know, is beneficial, but we don't know exactly how much we can get done, the thing with an energy performance contract is, you can't have touched anything that you've touched in 15 years, am I correct?
That's.
Look, I am nailing it tonight, John, I am very proud of myself, so that means if a univent has been put in 10 years ago, can't touch that, but if it's been over 15 years, that's one that can be done, LED lights, since we haven't done a lot of LED lights for the district, and that's where a lot of money savings comes from, that's all for game, so all the LED lights in the district is something that can be done, hasn't been touched, and then that will also then have to cost save, Rachel, you have a question?
Yeah, first of all, that runs with the electric buses, where you couldn't get an electric bus, you couldn't touch a bus unless it was 2009 or earlier, so it's the same sort of a thing where.
Yes.
It's a 15-year-old bus.
Was this or not part of this?
I know, but it's the same idea, and the other thing, I thought we did do a bunch of LED lights, I remember Francis talking about the cost savings from transitioning some of the lighting.
So we did, but we did larger areas, but there's still a large amount of the district that has not been done in that.
So it does demonstrate a reduced cost of electricity, and it would also demonstrate a reduced footprint of the district.
Correct, but we've done, you know, like the gymnasiums, the outside lights.
Yeah.
But we haven't done the elementary schools, we haven't done all the classrooms, so there's.
There's still.
The pool, for example, the pool estimate, just to switch over to LED lights, 65,000 dollars, and that's just to switch the pool lights to newer LED, so this is a cost savings avenue that we can look at, and then allowing in the future really helps you when you go for a referendum, because you're knocking off, you know, some of that price tag in the beginning. Did I do that right?
So can I share one last thing?
Yeah, because I'm not sure if I said it right.
It was all perfect, there was one thing that superintendent failed to mention, because it is considered a capital project, if you actually ask your voters for approval to do this project, the state will actually give you an extra 10% in building aid, believe it or not, it's, it is part of the law, and I have a number of clients that have taken advantage of that and gotten themselves up to 91% building aid, because they were in that 81% bracket, so it, it's, you can certainly chat with your financial planners, and don't, don't believe me, but you can certainly ask them, and they will certainly tell you that's very true, so that's, and it's a wonder, it's a, it's a fantastic, because it, what it does is actually helps provide positive cash flow, to help reduce the cost of a potential capital project at the same time, now, what I also share with you is, when you do mechanical work or lighting, you're gonna run into some asbestos, and I always say it's better to do the asbestos in the capital project, because there's no energy savings with doing abatement, so I, and I like having energy contractors do energy-related work, and having the abatement people do part of the, to do it in a capital project, you can do the abatement in an EPC, don't get me wrong, but it's better, but there's going to be a sub and then there's a markup, and to me, I'd rather do it in the capital project where the cost is as low as possible, that's the only thing the superintendent didn't share with you, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to understand kind of the equation from the vendor's point of view, so I'm selling LED lights, and I'm gonna install them at my cost, right?
Correct.
And I'm gonna get paid over an 18-year period?
That's correct, yep.
Through the savings that the school district is getting from their energy.
That's right, so let me, let me help, maybe clarify this a little bit better for you, let's assume for a minute that your energy bill is $100,000 a year for the district, okay, the energy contractor is gonna come in and say, I can do, let's say, a $1.5 million energy performance project for you, and we're gonna use that energy, your $100,000 energy bill, the F of it basically is gonna get paid to them for profit to do the work, nobody works for free, the other 50, the other 50,000 gets paid to your municipal lease, which is the financing company that does that, so, so in essence, you are budgeting energy bill every year, right, your 100,000, so you're gonna basically do, use that money to actually pay for your energy savings, and then the percentage of whatever the borrowing on that is.
And the vendor is making money off this deal?
That's correct, it's a, it's a very slim margin, but yes, they do, because you will find, pending your approval, that the successful energy performance contractor self-performs 90, 80 to 90% of their own work, because if you have to go out and get a sub, you know, you don't know where that number's gonna be, but if you're the contractor and you're the owner, you know exactly how to make money at doing this.
And there's, the contract is such that if things don't pan out.
They actually have to write you a check backwards to make up for the shortfall in not saving you the energy that they promised, yes.
But is it competitive when you go out and seek these kinds of?
Oh, absolutely, so one of the, one of the things that you're going to, tonight is consider is allowing our firm to write the RFP, to actually, in which we will invite people to come walk through your facilities and to create proposals, and then you would actually, as a board, either interview them or create a committee that will interview those, that company, you know, I usually like to sit in and listen, but you know, I usually take a backseat, because they actually are going to work for you, so I say you ask every question that you can, I've got a standard list of questions that we'll share with the district, that you can create or create your own questions, and you decide on who you want to hire, this is not somebody I'm, I'm hiring, this is somebody who's gonna work directly for you.
Can I clarify one thing?
Right.
The capital, the contractor is paid when the project is done with the capital lease funds, so they're taken care of at the very beginning, and then that capital lease is paid back over those 15 or 18.
We're getting the money back.
You're, we're saving the money and using it to pay the lease.
It's all based on energy savings, that's the key point of it, because if you don't have that energy savings from what you budget, then you're not gonna do the project, you're gonna take things out of that project in order to make it feasible.
So what you would be doing is that you're not really selecting a person based upon the value of their project, you're selecting the company based on the qualifications of their ability to perform that work, so the larger project may not be in the district's best interest, it's what contractor is coming through with the best proposal, and basically is going to be, feel that they're going to guarantee their work, and like I said, usually the companies that self-perform their work are the ones that usually the district usually hire.
And not to be suspicious of this, but, but based on what he just said, it sounds to me like the vendor gets paid right away at the end of the project, the end of the installation.
They'll, they'll get paid as, as the project progresses, yeah, like, like, just like a capital project.
Yeah, sure, and, and they're, okay, and now it's 18 years later, and hopefully everything's gone according to plan, and everybody's whole, but it might not have, we have to go back to that vendor 18 years later and say, hey, remember, when you did that project for us 18 years ago, didn't work out, and we need to make sure that we square up this.
It's a fair point, what I will share with you is, over like the first three to five years, they actually create a matrixes where they actually check, spot check their, their work, and actually provide a report to the district to show you where your energy savings are, so you can actually, you'll actually see where, that they're actually saving you money, which is why there's like this insurance policy that they actually have to, you know, pay, write you a check if they don't make that, it's actually in a contract that you're, you'll be getting, and one of the things about the, the energy project, they do take a little longer to get approved at SED, because they're not only looking at the drawings that we're creating, like we do for a capital project, they're actually reviewing the contract that you were signing with the energy performance contractor that shows where the savings are actually occurring, and that the, there's a guarantee clause in there.
And that, and that allows us to have some kind of a. If, if, if they, if they walk away on something like this, how big of a mess do they leave behind?
Well, so one of the things about this, the contract is that we, since we are, we would be the firm that actually creates the drawings, it's kind of, it's no different than when we work with any other contractor, you know, we actually have to, we have to check the work that they've installed, and sign off that they should be getting paid for that work, you know, as, as the project progresses, at the end of the project, you actually move into a different, you can move into a monitoring phase of, of that work for three to five years, and it's, it is renewable, but usually you'll get a three to five-year agreement from the performance contractor that, you know, they're gonna, they guaranteed those savings, and then they will come back and they will share those over up to the five years, you can actually renew that agreement later on, most, like, most of the time the district feel is that after the first five years, if they're meeting those matrices, that there's no reason to continue that, but I've, I've had districts where they've continued that right up through their, to the 18 years, and it does work.
The 18, the 18, 18 deal makes me shiver a little.
Why do you do an EPC and not those three forms of savings?
Well, that's a fair question, because most people say, is it worth it, and I, you know, in my mind, I usually explain it like this, districts usually do energy performance contracts where their, their needs outweigh the ability to raise local funds, if you have no issues with raising funds to do all this work, then I would say that you should go and grab all the energy savings for yourselves and do the work inside a capital project, dollars a day, that's, that's, I truly believe that, if there's, if some, most districts try to minimize the impact on taxpayers, and getting that extra 10% building aid and the positive cash flow usually sways a district on whether or not it's a, it's a good idea to actually do the energy project or not.
Well, it's not necessarily better for the taxpayers, if you're gonna save more money yourself, that's a bust for the taxpayers.
No, no doubt, no doubt.
What you're saying is to have the flow do a certain way, so it's not tough on the user.
That's right, so really what you're, what you're considering tonight is just the ability for us to write the RFP, it doesn't obligate the district to do any work at all, it's basically just saying that you're allowing us to solicit potential pricing, to come back to the, the board or whatever facilities committee to actually explain what it is, conduct an interview, and then you can decide whether or not you move forward, if you decide that this is not something that you want to do, see you later, the only thing that you've wasted is a little bit of your time, that's it.
So, so do the RFP limit us to an EPC, or could we decide based on those bids to do a capital project?
Well, the, the, the RFP that we're doing is actually to consider doing an energy project, so you, people are gonna come in and look, you know, we, we would actually go down a list and provide and say, you know, the district is looking to do all of these items, however, if you find something else on the list that's part of energy saving that you want to bring it to our attention, feel free, and then all of a sudden you'll, you know, we'll get, you know, probably four, five, six different proposals, and people will, you know, usually between myself and my engineers will create like a little matrix that you can actually kind of compare, because everybody's gonna come in with something else, some contractor will come in and say, oh, you want to do solar, we can give you a great solar project, others will sit there and say, it's a great, you know, solar's a fantastic idea, but if there's, there's, you know, state money behind it, it can't be really worth saving energy, so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, districts should be able to do whatever they like to do, but I don't know if I've answered your question solely or not.
So basically, it's just to get.
This is just to get proposals, and then later on.
The contract vehicle is TBD.
That's correct, that's right.
But it could be, not to pour words in your mouth, but it could be, we go through this whole discussing this with vendors, and decide, you know what, we'd be better off to just go out there with a referendum.
Absolutely.
Pretty much got the specs all lined up now, let's go, we could do that.
Yes, yes you could, yep.
Thank you.
I have one more question, you said something about additional 10%.
That's right.
If you do the EPC, that doesn't happen if you do it without the EPC.
That's correct, that's right, you actually have to ask your taxpayers for the permission to do the energy project before, so you can get the building aid.
But if you do it as part of a capital project, do you get that 10%?
You, you don't, you would just get your standard building aid ratio.
So you gave an example of a, of an 80%.
Of the 80, yeah.
So that they get 90, if we were getting, I don't know.
Yeah, if you just decided.
If we get 60, we wouldn't get 70.
Right, if you just decided not, not to ask your taxpayers and say, listen, we're just gonna do the energy project, you would get your standard building aid.
If you're doing it as part of a capital project, we don't get standard building aid?
Well, your energy project, it's similar, it's similar to a capital project, but you gotta, they, they are basically separate, they are separate items based upon state education apart from the way they give aid, the, the energy project is basically, you're gonna, let's say that you don't want to ask your taxpayers for the extra 10%, you basically pass a resolution saying that we're gonna select XYZ company to do an energy project, and, you know, and then you would actually accept a proposal at a board meeting and say, you know, whether or not it's like a million-dollar, million-and-a-half-dollar project, you would do the project, then get your, you'd submit all your paperwork, and you'd get your standard building aid.
Does she do this part of the capital project?
You, you can do it as a part of a capital project, but they would still be considered two, two individual projects going to state ed. Rachel, I think it's, so we have the ability to do an EPC without asking voters, you can do it without asking voters.
I got it.
However, if you optionally go ask voters about the EPC, you get a 10% bonus, that's it. But you would have to submit two different projects, you know, one, one that would be called energy project, one that would be called capital project.
Yep.
Other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, we're all set.
Thank you for saying.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
All right, it's not on the agenda for tonight, so you have to apologize for that, and we can put the resolution on for the next one, I do want to apologize, yeah, we missed that one, right, next, I want to talk about two more things really quick, first I want to talk about is the capital project update, phase two is done, and now there is leftover funds from phase two, enough funds that we are eligible and able to, after trying to figure this out for a while, to do a secure vestibule for the middle school, until for a while this can't be done, or it's going to be too much, or we went through it, finally going over it and working with, I'm sure, facilities committee last time we met, we can actually do a secure vestibule, it has to go, to be approved by SED, we still have the funds within the last capital project, so right there, when you walk in, that is a wide enough area to be able to create the secure vestibule area, which means basically a locking mechanism area, by creating a window that would go into the middle school office, so they would cut that open, create a window area, and then a secondary locking mechanism that would allow them to be able to let somebody into the building.
So they don't have to come back?
Right, because right now, you have to run, you have to go over here, you can't, you actually don't even know if you bust somebody and where they're going, you trust that they're going to the right location, but this is a way that you actually create that secure vestibule area, I know that was something that was discussed in the very first time that this, the capital project went out, but it was taken off due to money and concerns, it is something that we can do, I am, you know, the facilities team talked about it, I'm highly recommending that we do it, we go to SED with the plan, it probably will be another year, just fair warning, before it can get done, it takes five months for the plan to go through SED, we, all the, the stuff. I'm highly recommending that we do it. We go to SED with the plan. It probably will be another year, just fair warning, before it can get done. It takes five months for the plan to go through SED. All the stuff is still another six months out on ships and everywhere else. So we wouldn't be able to get the work done until 2023 of the summer. But I definitely think it's something that this district has wanted for a long time, doing a secure vestibule area for the middle school. It's needed and it's feasible. I want to share that that's something that can be done.
You bust somebody, yeah.
Yep.
Do they see who is busting?
Yep, there is. There's a camera for the bus.
And that would be the same.
Yeah, they would, but there literally will be a window right in between the two areas. So then that person can't go anywhere else. So let's say I come in and I want to drop off my, an instrument for my child. Instead of me opening, going into the building, going all sorts of places, I just go, hey, here you go. Have a great day and leave again. It just creates a much safer environment within the space.
So Frank, in terms of the funds?
Yeah.
Just because we have their Mosaic estimates, they say $150,000 to create a secure vestibule on the middle school.
Yep.
Is it going to be that much?
I think it's going to be about $120,000. And we're going to use Schedule N funds for some of those funds. And Schedule N is the safety and security funds that we can utilize. So we're using some grant money to offset that. So it's completely doable within the means that we have. Again, I just think it's important to note that, you know, it just can't be, oh, here's the money, this is why we do it. You got to make sure we're doing it right. Like, we use Schedule N funds for any of the security upgrades and equipment because that's easy for us to use and Schedule N will give reimbursement back. And so then we use a capital fund that we have left over to be able to do the window and the door mechanisms once they call up. The window itself is pretty expensive, those fire safety windows, pre-pricing. Any questions on those two things, EPC or the capital project? Okay. Last thing I just want to talk about is COVID updates. Because that is, you know, the big one that's been going on. So there's been some changes going on that I want to kind of discuss. One is New York State and Albany County Department of Health has changed the ability for school districts to take rapid antigen tests instead of Nats. Albany County Department of Health is also accepting home tests. So, you know, we are letting people know that you can take them. We are also going to be encouraging people that if you have symptoms, that as you go by the box, you go another test every 24 to 48 hours afterwards. Just be on the safe side because, you know, that's what the box is, so we're going right by it. But we are taking home antigen tests and rapid tests now. That is a big change from what's been done. But go along with this, the state also did too is, the state has recently sent the district, its enrollment number of students of tests of 2021, 20, the 2020, 21 school year, that's how many tests that we were supposed to receive. It's roughly 1,178. We received 85% of that, so we received roughly 940, or 928, excuse me, 928 tests. We gave those out today. We received them, I found out Saturday night that we were probably going to get them on Monday morning, confirmed Sunday night that we were getting them Monday morning. We got them this morning, developed a plan and had them out for our community by 2:30 today. We gave out over 600 tests so far. So, and that's really impressive. Within, you know, a day of getting them, I was pretty pleased with that. We are encouraging families to give them first to their children before coming into school tomorrow. There's two tests per kit. You know, it's not mandated. We're not saying you have to in order to come to school. You know, some people, we were giving them to elementary school and I said, you know, would you like a test for your family? And they said, do I have to? I said, you don't have to. These are provided to you if you so choose to take them. Some people did not take them and that's understandable. Some people said, no, I have a lot at home. I'm good to go. Or, no, thank you very much. But we do have, and we are giving them out, and we do plan on getting more in. And the state and the county does have more to come, but we're just waiting on what those numbers will be when they'll be here. So we are giving them out. We've already got a couple more positives back tonight from those test kits. So that's a good thing. So we're know, you know, that we have them and that we're getting them and, you know, it's doing what it's supposed to be doing. It's stopping them on the positives that are coming into the building, knowing that they have them around. And they're really hard to get. So, you know, this is a good thing. A lot of families were very happy that they were able to get them.
Frank, can you just explain to me, a test at home, how do you know that the results that are being presented to you are my results?
I don't.
Then I...
I got to be very honest with you. I'm not at your house and I'm not there giving them. So I cannot guarantee that people are going to be honest with us. But I know I've already built a school community and other people here that don't think there's going to be disrespect. You know, and everybody's going to do what they're supposed to do and do it correctly. They give out the number, they share us a negative, or they share us a positive and then they give for the same.
I've heard of like requirements where you got to have a picture taken, hit the swab. I thought there was some numbering system between them.
No, there is a picture and number that has to be done and given to us.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, but we don't, we're not checking each number.
I hear.
Frank, you don't want to know about negatives?
No, we do not want to know about negatives. We only want to know negatives when the child is symptomatic. That's really important. Because if we send you home and you're symptomatic and you have a negative test, that's what we want to know. We do want to know about your positive.
Frank, could you explain that a little bit? I've had a lot of parent questions. So if you have a negative rapid test, you can come to school even if you're sick?
Not if you're sick. Read the rest of it on the rest of it. It said...
Could you just clarify that?
Yeah, because on the letter that I sent home before it was, you still have to be fever free for 24 hours without having any fever reducing medicine. You can't have a runny nose. You can't have a cough that impedes your mask issues. So, you know, don't send your kids to school if they're sick. You still can't send...
Same with teachers, right?
Yeah.
I think those two, I got some questions there too. I think two of the comments that I got questions from when people said you can't send your kid sick is it said, well, you can't have a runny nose. It just can't be unhygienic for the mask. I'm like, really? And you can't have a cough, but you just have to wear a mask if you have a cough.
Yes. And just so you know, that information came directly from Albany County Department of Health. I cuffed and paste it.
Right. No, I'm not suggesting that you said it.
No, maybe clarify a bit, like your kid should not be sick anymore.
Right.
Correct. But in general, we're still saying any teacher or student that is sick and does not feel good should skate and even protect the negative.
Every time.
Staff members, yeah.
Staff, everybody.
Everyone.
Yeah. Just like in the olden days. If you were sick, you'd stay home. Those good old 2019s.
So going on with that, also Albany County Department of Health stated that schools can now do a test to stay program. Test to stay, if you don't know what that is, it's if you are on quarantine because you became in a direct contact with someone, and I think it's on school property, you then can test to stay on premises, meaning there's a certain number amount of tests that you have to take. We would use the test that we receive in order for an individual to continue to stay. We are not initiating that now. We are not at a point where I can send that out and do that. But it is something that Albany County Department of Health said that they will endorse as long as the school can do it correctly and efficiently. And we are not there. We are going to be looking at it this week to see how we can be doing it. But we are not, I want to keep saying this over and over again. We are not doing test to stay programs right now. Albany County Department has given the blue light for us to do so. We're just not at the point where we can.
The state DOH issued their own set of guidance. They said counties have to follow for it today.
Yes. No, I haven't seen it.
There were some interesting ones in there.
There's...
Has to be on school property, has to be a masked interaction, has unmasked contact, then you can do test to stay.
I haven't seen that yet, so that's all in that.
So this is not test to return?
Test return, something different. And we are doing test return.
And test return, the all activities?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Test return is all activities. Is that?
That was in there.
Yep. I think it's very confusing. It changes all the time. It's very confusing. We are doing tests, we are doing, I almost said it wrong. We are doing tests out of test to return. That's on day eight, which is near, is full day seven.
That's quarantine.
And that's from quarantine. We are not doing tests to stay, but we are having rapid antigen tests come into school. Very confusing.
But...
Yes.
So another question. So even though we have the antigen test now, we're still using the quadrant for PCR?
Absolutely, we are. Yes. We still have quadrant. We are still utilizing quadrant. We are still encouraging people to use that.
Do the background surveillance?
Yeah.
How many of those are being done daily in the spare time?
You're putting me on the spot. I don't have that number.
Yeah.
I really don't know.
I know my kid's got it once, which was awesome.
And we still have plenty of the diagnostic PCR tests?
That's a quadrant. We have as many of those as we need.
We do.
Yep. If those don't run out, we've basically been getting them over and over again. Yeah, I have no idea. I don't have any of those. I'm happy with your question. So after that, I do want to talk about another confusing topic for people. CDC has changed the isolation and quarantine procedures. New York State Department of Health has not. So let me rephrase this. New York State Department of Health has not taken the CDC changes for quarantine and isolation. New York State Department of Health has taken the changes of lessened isolation for positive people for if you're a critical worker, okay? Only if you're a critical worker that does not pertain to students. CDC deals with students. New York State Department of Health has not taken that. New York State Department of Health has only taken it for critical workers in New York State.
Or teachers and staff?
Yes. Teachers and staff are considered critical workers. There's a bunch of different people that are on that memo. And I believe teachers are number nine in that. Teachers, bus drivers, custodians, food service workers. They're number nine in that and the state memo that came out from New York State Department of Health. What that means is an employer can choose to allow staff members to come back after day five of being tested positive. Day zero has to be the day of onset of symptoms or when they were asymptomatic. So technically, day six is when they return. But there's a whole bunch of criteria that have to go along with that. They have to make sure that they're double masked. If they're wearing the cloth mask, they have to wear another mask over it. They have to be fever free for 72 hours, not 24 hours. So there's a bunch of different things and criteria that has to be met. But that has helped school districts stay open. I know today that's helped specific school districts stay open and other school districts because you're having people who are coming back after that timeframe. And CDC and New York State Department of Health cited the guidance that the Omicron variant and with being vaccinated is less than that time. So there's a whole bunch of medical stuff behind it that I am not a medical professional, but that's why they have done that. So we are looking at that, yes.
My understanding was that there was recommendation to the CDC or by the, I can't remember, that they include in that a negative test result as well before returning.
So...
Was that that?
That was not in the New York State.
I think that was Dr. Fauci was suggesting that.
That they were considering it.
Yeah, that was not...
The New York State memo explicitly says test is not required.
Yeah, thank you.
But the other question, so the New York State memo though does say in limited circumstances when there's a critical staffing shortage. So it's not like an all the time.
Right.
Right? So in, let's say we have one teacher out.
That's true.
Some form, they're still out for 10 days.
Right.
But if we have a big staffing shortage, we'll really get back.
For example, we had nine staff members on our elementary school today alone.
Yep.
So, you know, I mean, we are having staffing issues. And that's just in with one part of the district. So, and most districts are facing staffing issues at this point in time. And, you know, there's a lot that goes on, right? There's COVID issues. There's families who have children, right? Those families are quarantined. Those kids are quarantined. Someone needs to be home with them. So there's a lot of different criteria that goes into having some of these staffing issues that schools are facing now.
But why would we want, we have tests. Why would we want them to test negative? Why would we want a problem?
Because they've already tested positive.
They've already tested positive.
So they're going to test positive.
But not if we do the rapid one necessarily. That's just if you're contagious.
So New York State Department of Health stated no test is required?
I know, but why would it seem rapid? And that's what all the literature is saying. Like, we have tests. Why wouldn't we just?
So they...
If a teacher comes back and it is positive and still shedding the virus and kids are sick, I mean, I don't understand the point. Then you have to quarantine the whole class?
Well, when somebody's positive for COVID, they have like the antibody for 90 days, so you don't test them for 90 days.
Well, but they don't usually show up on the rapid test. Like they do with the PCR. That's why they're saying they should recommend a use of a rapid negative. I understand why you couldn't do the PCR.
Yeah.
Generally, a rapid is considered a measure of contagiousness as opposed to right and we should be doing.
Right. But it can definitely come back positive.
Sure.
You know, say you had, just had COVID type.
Yeah.
Which is why I think they were, so the CDC is talking about changing their rapid for five days to... One of the reasons why they include the test in there is because you can get tests. So you can't say how to test if you can get a rapid test.
Right.
Blah, blah, blah.
We have some...
I heard today, the DOH for students, so they said that students will never be covered under that five day. But they were talking about a, students can come back early after two negative rapids or something. I don't like the guidance is outlawed, but it opened a press conference that mentioned that.
If the district wants to make it, that you'd have to have a negative rapid test, that's something that the board can decide and put into that. I'm following New York State Department of Health, and it's the time that does not have that in there.
Yeah, I mean, I thought the decision not to...
It does explicitly say no test.
I thought the decision not to require it though was based on science around Omicron. And that's why they decided somewhat less than the quarantine period or being, none of us really know.
Right. I'm not a medical professional, so I was just following the guidance.
I can find him, yeah, explain why.
Yeah, I'm guessing they have it, but...
I suppose the one other comment I have is, in that memo it talks about, so healthcare workers are required to wear K95s for free. Teachers owners are not, but it's recommended. Like the town in Scotland, they're giving away K95s for free. I mean, they say, hey, you come back, you got to wear a K95. Here's one.
I don't have any. I mean...
He said town in his staff.
The town in Scotland is giving them away for free.
I think they're available.
The state got hundreds of thousands distributed to localities.
I can make any change to the documentation that the board would like. Just have to have a board direction. The board wants us to do K95s on the masks for staff members. We just have to make a decision.
Well, I vote for a negative test.
I vote for a negative. Not that it's a vote. We have a vote. But I would think that, given that I can't, I'm not a medical professional either, but I look for research supporting the return, the change in...
No matter how long the quarantine?
The five, they shortened the quarantine and it was, I couldn't find any research that said that this is, it was simply based on critical staffing issues.
But, okay, but...
So it wasn't based on the science of...
What you're saying is there should be a negative test regardless of what the quarantine length is. If they've been out 10 days, still a negative test?
They're only saying for the positive.
We're not requiring a negative test now.
Yeah, no.
But I think that's what, I think that's what Chris proposed.
Especially for students.
Well, I was just saying, if you're shortening it, someone with a test of positive is going to shorten it.
Would you like me to reach out to Dr. Waylon and ask her?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nice.
Why don't I just...
Yeah, it's a reason.
I'm all for a special meeting.
Yeah, I guess we can phrase the question to her, look, we have tests. Should we do it?
Is there benefit in, well, like, do that false class and then a false negative?
And perhaps the mask question.
And how about I also ask her medical director as well?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that. Because, yeah. I can't imagine, you know, there's going to be much, I mean, maybe, they're probably going to say something, that's why we don't test yet for 10 days to require. You know, there is some kind of... Yeah, there is some kind of...
That would be awesome. And I'm sure they're...
Let me check one last thing.
And can you check how many surveillance tests are being done not to pressure anyone to do it?
Are you asking for us the surveillance testing? Or if people are using them and choosing to use them just because...
The district's surveillance testing. Just out of curiosity.
Well, we're supposed to be doing 20% of it, right?
Well, it's 20% of the people who have...
Volunteer.
Let's remember that because it still has to be volunteer basis.
Yeah.
So if I only have 200 people who offer to do it, then I'm only doing 20% of the 200 people. So I think that's important to know. I think that's important to know.
But also I'm asking this not with, you know, it's, um, not like when police are supposed to get a certain number of tickets written or anything. It just is just out of curiosity.
But are you asking also how many people are also choosing to utilize that program as well in the week? Because there's people that we're not doing surveillance.
The denominator.
But there's also people saying, hey, at least four or five people prior to this, four or five people a day saying, can I get quadrant testing? Are you also asking about those people or just the ones that we're doing surveillance on?
Perhaps both. I mean, if it's no big deal.
No, no, it's easier.
Yeah.
We just have to get the information.
Didn't we just heard that, I think that, um, you all may have opened a new testing site?
Yes.
Very exciting.
Yep.
The rapid testing side of the old Ruby Tuesday's.
Yeah.
Last thing I have is, um, I'll be quick on this one. I'm doing the booster clinic on Saturday from ten forty-five to noon. Um, I have pretty good timing on that because I actually knew that the FDA was going to do that. Um, I talked to our pharmacist today. New York State Department of Health has not taken that guidance at this point in time, so it's not have been approved for New York State Department of Health for twelve fifteen years. I'm hoping by Saturday it will be. So, you know, it's actually luck of the draw that, you know, I did that. So we are having a clinic for on Saturday for boosters.
So how late, how late can people sign up?
They can sign up until Friday night.
Friday night, okay.
And we're going to send out more notifications. Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. I tell you, the communications that come out of your office have been really good. I I know that you're dancing around every day, but it's been really good, under, easily understood. I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, four point one minutes of regular meeting. Can we have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so let's move five point one to five point five. We have pressures report, personnel, items, um, CSC recommendations, BOSI stuff list, approval of contract with CYO. Any questions on any of that?
Other CYO work is hard to understand from the contract if you were asking for additional funds or the funds are already to.
Jim, did she, Rachel actually spoke to Jim prior?
Sorry.
So Rachel, would you like to give Jim's answer?
It is part of a season and it is a single organization. So within our facilities, the policy based on facilities use, it is covered within the original cost of the use.
Because it's the same season.
Same, same season, same organization.
With extra days?
It is.
An extra custodial?
It's part of the facilities policy. The way the policy action is written, that would be a question the facilities committee could explore and determine if the addition, there's a reason to change that.
There's no additional custodial person because there's already custodians on. We're not adding any additional custodians.
So.
Any other questions?
Yeah, there's one question. The very end, number seven, item number seventeen says, uh, behalf of each party executing warrants that he is clearly authorized to receive they or. We don't do that in contracts.
I think we may dismiss it.
Yeah, the the very bottom of the contract, the CYO thing. Says he.
Does he want to switch that?
Number seventeen, with his he. Yeah.
Anything else? Can I have motion move five point one to move five point five, please?
Remove.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The audit committee, we did not.
We'll meet next month.
We'll meet next month. At what time? Would you like us to start, Archie?
I would say six thirty.
Okay, so before February, I believe it's third meeting, six thirty audit.
That's next time.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um, curriculum, Chair Ken?
We'll be meeting later this month.
Okay, so we'll hear from you next month.
You will.
Thank you. Buildings, Chair Rob?
Frank stole like.
Everything.
Seventy, eighty percent of my thunder, so I I gotta figure out what I'm talking about here. Uh, we, uh, we talked, we actually had a good conversation about amenities at the fields and talked with Joe a bunch about frameworks and ways to pay for things and looking at things that we may need for athletic fields. One of the things that was suggesting was it a, like loudspeaker stuff, was that one of them? Uh, we also looked at like, you know, like the, uh, press box and and things like that. But starting to, starting to framework for a conversation of, you know, well, what is the district's appetite for paying for some of these improvements? And what, you know, could we do things like work with the buzz? And Joe suggested a pilot would be, whether it be baseball or softball, booster. Yeah, for 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 dugouts or working on them to raise, working on them to, uh, raise some money. Um, talked about a bunch of other stuff, uh, facilities athletics related, track resurfacing, uh, tennis court preparers and stuff like that. That will show up in another capital project. The, uh, scoreboard is finally being installed, satellite fields. And we're doing some warranty work on roofly preparers at the high school. Um, Frank talked about possible phase three. Frank talked about APC potential. You know, using facilities, uh, Scooba wants to use it. I think we said yes, right? Something like that. Am I right, Frank?
Mr. Seppi has, I had to speak to them to get more details.
Yep.
And that's where I left it, so I haven't gotten back to it yet.
But generally sounds good. It's also low impact, low risk, not very many people.
Yeah, it's very, 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 very negative.
Yep, um, prioritization of building additional survey items. We, we had a, you know, long talk already about that and transportation services kind of deal. Um, and and really I think that's, uh, that's about it. Did I miss anything?
No.
Anyone? Good, that was my quickest update, yes.
Thanks, Rob. Um, Rachel, policy?
We're meeting on Wednesday.
So we'll hear from you next month. And I see we have one policy for vote today.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, new business. Let's, um, let's group them all together, seven point one to seven point six. So we have exception, we have some, um, we have the score, the volunteer policy that would be a vote tonight that we talked about last time. We have some very generous donations this month, um, that, um, are very much appreciated and, um, five thousand five hundred for the Linda Foff Memorial Scholarship, donation of twenty-five hundred from the Durbin family, twenty-five hundred from the, another twenty-five from the Durbin family, four hundred and fifty from Hannaford Helps, and donation of hundred bottles of five hundred milliliter hand sanitizer from Ferguson and sanitizer. Very much appreciated. And then we have a grant. Well, that will also be accepted or voted on tonight from Rochester Institute of Technology. All very much appreciated. And then we have the memorandum of agreement with BTA and UEP. Any questions on any of those items? Okay, then can I have a motion to move?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Up to you, you sit board to be heard.
I was just wanting to say thanks to all the staff, the teachers and and Frank and the whole team who have been doing so much to help keep the students and staff safe through another interesting chapter of this and wishing everyone a happy new year as they start this new chapter of Omicron.
Did you have something, Frank?
Oh, no, I'm just agreeing. So that's work. Every way because so much of what confused me now and how Frank stays on top of it and everyone else, school nurses, I can't.
I can't imagine.
Well, I just want to say that. Thank you because we now have another full-time nurse to help us through this. So that is huge.
And she's.
So that is, that is a very, very positive thing. But I was, when you said that, I was like, oh, well, thank you for that.
Definitely a great time to have nursing medical intervention, that's for sure.
Sitting out from an outsider looking in, uh, the work that you and your team are doing, of course, it really is. I I am amazed at all the work that you have to do and all the adjustments and shifts and stuff like, well, we didn't see that COVID, but so we, there it is. We're going to deal with it. And, uh, here we are open today. And that, that to me is really, you know, a huge achievement. So congratulations.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I said to the staff beforehand, it's not this one person, it's all of us together because it's every person in this district is making the work because if not one person holds up their weight, then something's going to fall down. So it's, I appreciate that. I will take the gratitude, but it is for every person who works your handless board to continue keeping these conversations going and moving us forward.
Like I also think it's, it's great that you're working with the superintendents throughout it because, you know, it's, I think that's huge because Gilderlin, somebody could be have a kid, you know, you could be living and teaching in Gilderlin, have a kid in Gilderlin, have a kid here, you know, up in Burn, playing sports against each other. But if you guys weren't, young women, if you superintendents weren't working together so closely, I mean, there's so many bordering communities and doing the consistent thing. So like when you read in the paper, this school's doing that, well, so are we and so are we. I think, you know, that it's, it's fantastic that, that you're doing that and you're part of that.
We have a great amount of teamwork in the capital districts of different towns.
Yep, so that's greatly appreciated. Anything else? Okay, dates to remember, um, is I right? February third, our next meeting, February seventh, I've been told. Okay, so February seventh and starting at six thirty with audit committee. We have no need for executive session today, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a great evening, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you.